Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 8th, 2022. We're in the Century Jury Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. Today, we have our invocation, this is a special invocation, from Pastor Raul Sandoval. He has done this, makes his third time to come up here to give the invocation. He does a wonderful job. He does it in Spanish, and his son is with him that will translate into English. So, we're going to get a double deal today, both in Spanish and in English. So Pastor Sandoval, you and your son, please come up and give the invocation, and thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. Let's pray. Señor del cielo.
Our heavenly Father.
Estamos aquí.
We're here today.
Todos estos asuntos.
For these matters today?
Te pedimos.
I pray.
Que tú puedas poner sabiduría.
That you may put wisdom.
En estos hombres y mujeres.
And these men and women today.
Que tú los guíes.
That you may guide them.
Para dirigir la ciudad.
To direct the city.
Gracias por nuestra libertad.
Thank you for our freedom.
Como país.
For our country.
Como estado.
Like our state.
Y como Granbury.
And like Granbury.
Gracias por estar con nosotros.
Thank you for being with us.
Esto oramos y lo pedimos.
In the name we pray.
En el nombre de Jesús.
In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Thank you both. If you would, please join me in the pledge of United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you very much. Okay. Today, we've got a very special honor, but before we do, I'm going to remind everybody that today is the first regularly scheduled Commissioners' Court, and as such, we have open mic where citizens can come up and speak on any topic other than an agenda topic, and you have five minutes for a total of 30 minutes. So I have three people so far that signed up for the.
For the agenda.
Yeah, for the open mic Citizens' Deal, and we'll call you at the opportune time. We are also very, where is the pledge that we've signed that right there? We're very proud today to have the American, or the, well, I'm going to get first, the Texas Daughters of the American Revolution here, and the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution here, to honor the Vietnam's Veterans Day. This is very special. I was in that era and got back, and it wasn't very popular to be a soldier back then in those days. So, I think this is a long time coming, and I have a proclamation here today, and I have at least four women that look like generals here with all of their dealings. And Ms. Harris, I've said that I would like for you to come up here and read it, and the other ladies would come up and stand with you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Y'all can go ahead and face the audience, or do that, or, maybe you need the microphone.
I have a pretty loud voice.
Okay, yes, you do. Right, Ms. Cook?
This is to designate March 29, 2022, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. Whereas our nation's Vietnam War commemoration gives us the opportunity for all Americans to recognize, honor, and thank our Vietnam veterans and their families for their service and sacrifices during the Vietnam War from November 1st, 1955, to May 15, 1975. And whereas over 9,000 organizations across America have joined with the Department of Defense as a commemorative partner to honor our nation's Vietnam veterans, including all 197 chapters of the Texas Daughters of the American Revolution, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. And whereas this commemoration includes 9 million Americans, with approximately 7.2 million of them living today, and makes no distinction who served in country, in theater, or for station elsewhere during those 20 years, all answered the call of duty. And whereas in 2016, Veterans Affairs Secretary Robert A. McDonald designated March 29, the last day that U.S. troops were on the ground in Vietnam, as a day to honor those who have borne the battle, and to extend gratitude and appreciation to them and their families. Now therefore, I, Ron Massengill, Judge Hood County, along with all the members of the Hood County Commissioners' Court, do hereby proclaim March 29, 2022, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. And they have all signed it. It's a lovely proclamation, and we archive these and keep them, and we'll post them for everyone to see. I'd like to thank the Massengill and the Hood County Commissioners' Court on behalf of the Elizabeth Crawford Chapter, the Daughters of the American Revolution, along with some of my chapter members who are with us today, Honorable Regent Margaret Cook, Recording Secretary Ollie Roberts, Service to Veterans Committee Chair Kathy Castro, and all the rest that could not be here today. And we thank you Commissioners for allowing us this time to honor our Vietnam veterans. It is the 50th anniversary, as I mentioned, of the end of the war, and only the 5th anniversary of the recognition of this national holiday. So we hope you will all take time to honor Vietnam veterans, if you have to wear a hat or something, and say thank you. Thank you so much. You too, sir. On March 29, if you would please join at 11:30 a.m. with the Friends of Memorial Land, Margaret here is on their board, and we try to participate as a chapter as well. We'll have a wreath and special prayer to thank and honor our Vietnam veterans. So please try to attend 11:30 on March 29. Thank you.
Ms. Harris? Very nice, very nice, you guys. Would you hand this to Ms. Lang so she can sign it, and you may keep, I guess both of the copies? Go ahead and keep those, or at least the original and. Thank you, ladies. That was very, very nice. Long overdue, too, I think.
You're saying good for your service.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So the next item on our agenda is the open mic, and Speaker number one is Steve Biggers. Mr. Biggers.
Ms. Lang, if you could help me, please. Morning, Court. Ms. Lang's going to hand out a packet for me. Inside there, I try to be a man of my word. My yes is my yes, my no is my no, and for the last three months, I've promised if I got elected, you'd get a packet with the two constitutions, the U.S. and the state, and also the Republican platform. That's what you guys are getting today. So here's the deal. History was made, I think, last week. Certainly a good turn in our county. I've said that for many weeks now. The tide is changing, the wind's blowing. So Commissioner Andrews, I hope this packet helps, kind of guidelines. You kind of be the voice of reason, and you're quiet, and you're thoughtful, and you sit over there, and you bring that rural Texas, Lipan logic to this board up here, and we appreciate that. Keep doing that. Mr. Cotton, congratulations. You helped make history. I really appreciate it. All your antics, all your comments, all your disrespect for the citizens of this county, sue us if you don't like us spending our money that way. You don't need to have an open mic time. You argued against those things, sir. So you helped make history getting the first female Commissioner elected. I appreciate that. Go have fun, retire on your essential golf cart, golf course, and just live the rest of your life happily. I hope, maybe this will just be some reading for you. Commissioner Eagle, keep flying the flag. I know you have copies of these things. You're a Founder's Fighter. I appreciate it so very much. Congratulations on that. Commissioner Wilson, everybody had high hopes. We really did. Man, a man of integrity, shot heard around the country, Texas hero. I don't know what happened, but I think you need to readjust some of your decision-making process, because everybody you supported, everybody you sent money to, everybody you had pictures taken with, they lost. And pretty soon, first of the year, when these two seats change, you're going to be like the Maytag man. You're going to be the loneliest man up there. So you need to readjust your decision-making process. Judge, you got to be in a nervous place. You have to be. Man, I got more votes than you did, Judge. So you got to be in a nervous place. I got 4,900 votes. You got 4,600 votes. So you have to be in a pretty nervous place. There's a reason that the Republican Party is an elephant. We don't forget. We don't forget our liberties being shut down. We don't forget people saying in your chair, "Folks, we have to take your liberty away because we got to get the money from the government." So hopefully, these are some guidelines for you guys to go by. These are your rules that you need to go by. These are your stay-in-your-lane things that you guys need to do, because the line was drawn last week in the sand. And I'm telling you right now, this EC coming up, the EC I'm going to be chairman on, it's going to have the elections, it's going to bolster the party, but it's going to be a watchdog, and it's going to do more than just bark. Please understand, stay in your lane. Thank you.
Next speaker, Victoria Calder.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today, and I really want to thank you for the Veterans Day thing. I know we're not supposed to speak to anything on the agenda, but my husband's a Vietnam era veteran, and that just means so much. So I appreciate that you've made that a formal occasion for us. It just really matters. I won't be able to stay today long. As many of you may know, this is the second day of the contested case hearing before the State Office of Administrative Hearings for the City of Granbury's wastewater, proposed wastewater plant, and those opposing it. So this first, the next four days, or next three days, counting today, there'll be a hearing. It is available on YouTube, and if any of you watched that yesterday, then you know without a doubt from the way that went, that there is absolutely no question, but that the City of Granbury well may be denied a final permit. And so I think it would behoove you to get that transcript. It would be available later, and that's very important. So the process, this first, this week is just the initial deposition, but the whole process goes on, and the earliest there could be any kind of decision from the Commissioners would be next fall, and it can go on for years beyond that. So I guess what I'd like to say, first of all, I absolutely want to thank Commissioner Eagle for putting forward the effort that he's been putting forward to work toward a positive solution that would include city-county cooperation and collaboration, which I've spoken to y'all about many times. I think that the wastewater issue for our entire region is one of the most critical issues that faces our explosive growth that goes beyond the limits of the city, and that it's long past overdue for y'all to get on board and work together and engage. Again, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. And so you have a rare opportunity to do us proud, to leave it all on the court, to make a concerted effort to address this issue. And I would say, not only is it an opportunity, but it is an obligation. As I've shared with you before, the Hood County regulations for compliance that includes y'all is intended to implement the county's strategic plan. This is Section 1.1 of Article 1, and it is to provide for stormwater drainage, public facilities, other needs that are necessary, public utilities and facilities, ensuring the creation and continuance of a healthy, attractive, safe, and efficient community that provides for the conservation, enhancement, and protection of its human and natural resources. And this is to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the county's citizens. Under 1.3, Section B, "The Commissioners' Court of Hood County has been delegated responsibility under Texas law for overseeing the quality of water resources in the county as impacted by rapid growth and development." Sound familiar? "And these regulations are a necessary component of such oversight." I don't have time to read the specific sections again that most definitely apply to your role, but I hope that you will work toward the aim of any funds that might become available, whether that be COVID funds, whether that be, there are funds right now, over half a billion has been allocated to Texas by the EPA recently, and that can include wastewater infrastructure. So I think when we look at the counties, I'm just going to call it shortsightedness in looking only at construction costs of a facility, that's not what you look at. You look at what is the cost that ends up, even if an actual construction cost is more to put it in a healthy, a place that would be less damaging to the environment, to the businesses, to tourism, right at the gateway, like this one, and look at putting it somewhere where it's in keeping with the watershed protection plan, which this proposed facility isn't. That would qualify, as only the second watershed plan from the state of Texas ever to be adopted by the EPA, would qualify for EPA grants. It would qualify for green incentives. There are COVID, COVID money is available for projects that are not well underway, and is used all over the state, at the Blanco River, in other jurisdictions, Fort Worth, for wastewater infrastructure needs. And y'all have a rare opportunity to be part of the solution. I hope you'll step up. I hope you'll leave it on the court. I hope you'll do us proud. I hope that good enough for government work is not where you're coming from. And I believe in you. I believe in this board, and I think that you could make that difference, and pray that you will. And if this facility is the best we can do, the proposed facility, heaven help us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anita Branch.
Hello, Judge. In 2008, I worked, I was still with the Army Corps of Engineers, and as many of you all will recall, the entire economy collapsed because of bad loans, bad mortgages, and stuff like that. And so the government, the federal government undertook a massive program called ERA, and it was called the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. And as an engineer working for the Department of Defense, one of my jobs was actually to execute the spending for many of the projects that we had, that had basically been ready to go, but just didn't have the funds to accomplish. And so as a result of implementation of those, what we always called ERA funds, we ended up with increased defense capabilities because we modified major components of our bases. We did a huge amount of work in Fort Bliss. We did a huge amount of work in San Antonio. We did huge amounts of work on all of our military facilities all across the nation. But again, that was just the federal government side. A lot of that money from the ERA program was sent to the states to execute similar projects, similar infrastructure improvements, things that would make lives better for Americans all across the nation. And so sadly, we've got COVID, and as a result of COVID, we have a second American Recovery Act. And the benefit of that is that we have funds, discretionary funds, that we can use to actually improve the lives of Hood Canyons. And I would like to see the Commission consider utilization of those funds to improve our wastewater situation here in the community. One of the things that TCQ has been pushing for for years is regionalization of wastewater facilities, so that you can have one big one instead of dozens of little ones scattered everywhere. Makes perfect sense. You have, you can get large amounts of land to expand on, and in that way, everybody knows what's there, and they can expand and build as the need arises. Because I don't see any change in the population going down anytime soon, I think it would be wise to invest these funds to pursue wastewater alternatives that would help current situation and also protect the future with regard to wastewater initiatives. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Branch. Okay, that concludes the Citizens-at-Large comments. Thank you very much. And now we go to the consent agenda. Does any of the Commissioners wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, Judge, I've got one item that I'd like to pull from the consent agenda, and it has to do with salary changes. And from the HR gave us our salary changes, and we have a person that is being promoted above Step 6, which requires court approval. So Ms. Wilburn, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, I asked Commissioner Cotton to pull. So that the court could separate it from the rest of the personnel changes and discuss it. Because of the step plan policy, it does state a promotion above a Step 6 does require court approval. And so I didn't want you to approve it along with the rest of the personnel changes. The employee is being promoted from a sergeant to a lieutenant. He is filling a position that was recently vacated by an administrative lieutenant who left at a Step 9. The Sheriff's Office has asked that the court approve this employee be promoted to that Step 9. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The Sheriff is also here and can answer any questions that the court may have. I just, again, wanted you to do a separate action on this particular promotion.
Thank you. Sheriff, do you have anything to say at all?
No. We lost a person to the City of Granbury. He thinks he can make more money and more retirement, so after nine years, he left to go to the city. The person we promoted, he's been a great person, great hand for all the years that he's worked for me. Excels in everything he does, and we felt that the spot was vacated, and so we'll put him straight in there at the same page.
Judge, and I'll make a motion that we approve the promotion of Joshua Lane, Patrol Sergeant, to Patrol Lieutenant, to a Step 9.
I'd like to talk about that a little bit. We're losing some experience over there at the lieutenant position with Mr. Davis moving on. I mean, that's a two-step and a great promotion. Is that, that's a pretty significant jump to go up a rank in, two steps. He gone from a seven to a nine, is basically that.
So do you know what his qualifications are? Do you know?
What do you mean?
That he should go to a less than, less than a nine? Why do you don't think he should go to less than a nine?
I'm just asking.
Well, that's what we ought to ask the Sheriff.
Yeah. He's a, he's an EMT, has been one for lots of years. He steps in when he's close enough to a medical emergency, a car accident, and he steps in to help. So he does way more than any deputy has ever done. He's part of the street crimes unit from the past till now with the promotion, so had the dog, and we're working on getting him another dog. Just all-around great supervisor, great person, does his job very well, so we feel that it's worth it.
Okay, so he's, you feel that he's deserving of the promotion?
Definitely, definitely.
It sounds like he's going to be doing more duties than possibly the administrative portion of his job.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Way more than just the administrative job, so.
I don't want to be a stick in the mud here, but this is a discussion item now, and just from a technical standpoint, you know, I don't, I think we need to put this on the next agenda to have it as a discussion item. You know, in my opinion, this was a consent agenda item that's been pulled off. Now it goes to a discussion item, and it's not on the agenda. So from a technical standpoint, procedural-wise, I believe we should bump this to the next court, and then we can discuss and get it done. Just my two cents.
Well, we have a motion that's been made, and second, and I think that we've done this before, so thank you, Commissioner Eagle, for your discussion, both of you. But I'm going to go ahead and call the vote if there's any more discussion, so.
Have a second. I missed a second. Did we have it?
Yeah.
Jack Wilson. So motion's been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the Step 6 to a Step 9 of Joshua Lane, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side.
Aye, for the reasons stated.
Okay. Passes four to one.
Thank you.
Got anything else, Ms. Wilburn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Sheriff. All right, for line item transfers up here, do we have Ms. Becky?
Oh. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, there's, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we got a motion to approve the consent agenda with the one exception of Joshua Lane being promoted, made by Commissioner Cotton, second by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay, now, we got line item transfers. Is that you, Ms. Kidd?
You want to develop the motion?
Those line item transfers are just in the consent agenda. We should go probably to the.
Oh, that's right. What am I doing up here? I've gone down here. Mr. Clinthead, how could I overlook you, man? You don't have anything, Mr. Lenny?
Morning, Commissioners.
Next. Oh, you got the, okay, Road Ops, none, okay, good. There I am. I got so many papers here this morning. Okay, development, that was on the consent.
Morning, Judge, morning Commissioners. First item we have today is public hearing to discuss and consider a variance to Section 2, Article 9, Sections 2.2, 2.63, and 9.7 of the subdivision regulations for rolling stone estates, phases 1 and 2 in Precinct 1. Section 2.1, Paragraph 2, describes an adverse possession, just to give you an idea. If there's a rise more than one-tenth of an acre, of a foot, or greater in the water surface created by a proposed stormwater, and no buildings are impacted, if there's a five-thousandths of a foot or greater rise, and any buildings are impacted, if there's an increase or spread in the stormwater runoff from the proposed development outside of the rideaway or drainage basement, if the velocity of stormwater runoff is less than five feet per second, and there's an increase in the proposed velocity more than 5%, or the velocity is greater than five feet per second, there's an increase in proposed velocity, then it's considered an adverse possession. And the 2.1, Paragraph 63, the zone of influence described as design point along the receiving stream where the proposed development constitutes 10% or less of overall watershed contributing to the design point. So it's basically where everything meets, however far downstream that is. Section 9.7, the design methodology, requires that all computations of floodplains, culverts, channels, et cetera, shall be based upon fully designed upstream conditions. The regulations allow for two methods of calculation, drainage areas, depending on the size of drainage area, contributing to the runoff at the most downstream point of a projection. The regulations specify that the rationale method is acceptable for situations in which the drainage area is less than 200 acres, and a unit hydrograph method is required for situations with larger drainage areas and detention basins. Runoff calculations shall be based upon fully developed watershed conditions in accordance with the uses proposed on the subdivision plan. According to the drainage analysis development has received for this project, the area the developer is requesting the variance for, excuse me, requesting these variances for the area of the project is south, and it's all sheet flow, and none of the stormwater from the proposed streets will be conveyed in this direction. As the engineers contention that the following, that following the regulations and mitigating the natural and proposed sheet flow would require constructing several ponds, and the overflow or discharge from these ponds would no longer be sheet flow. Discharge would be channelized flow and would create more of an environmental impact than what naturally exists due to erosion, and what would create, then would create an adverse impact. I believe the engineer would like, is the engineer here?
Yes, Mr. Starr.
He'd like to speak on these variants and provide justification, and it should be in your backup.
Okay. Yeah, we didn't go into a public hearing. I'm on a jury right now into a public hearing on this, on the thing. Come on up and talk about it. Judge.
Judge, members of the court, my name is Chuck Stark. I'm with Barron Stark Engineers, and I'm the engineer on this project for called Ranches. We were here with our concept and preliminary plat over the preceding months. We're now down to the final engineering plans. We're anxious to proceed forward with the final plat for the first phase, and really this is a, I guess, a discussion and ultimately that y'all are going to make a decision on in that I believe there's a portion of your regulations that are not necessarily applicable to this particular instance. I understand why you have the regulations. I even helped write those in some instances, but they are aimed really at curbing dense urban-type development from having an adverse impact on downstream property owners. In this particular instance, I would ask you to look at the character of the project and also the character of the surrounding land in that the proposed development is two- to five-acre lots, so it's large. The downstream areas are pasture land, grazing land, and whatnot. And under the, as it exists out there today, undeveloped, the vast majority of the water that falls on this property runs off onto adjacent property under surface flow conditions. There are 10 locations that we have identified in our analysis where water leaves the property. On three of those, we propose detention ponds. They're existing point source discharges, and I can go into detail with that, what that means if you'd like. And we will be installing detention ponds in connection with your ordinance. The other seven, however, are just broad expanses where they flow across the property line over hundreds of feet, and to bring those together into a pond and create new point source discharge points, in my opinion, as the design professional, is more adverse to the adjoining property than having sheet flow that occurs over hundreds of feet. Downstream of this is agricultural land, numerous stock tanks. I believe the surface flow is beneficial to the adjoining property. They have either hay or crops. They want that water to go to the stock ponds. So I think it is a better design, and that's part of my job, is to evaluate each individual instance and see if this truly is good, bad, and different, or what it is. Now, technically, reading the letter of the law of your ordinances, we would be obligated to put a pond at all 10 locations, as opposed to the three that we're proposing, and not the other seven. So I understand that takes a waiver, which is within y'all's prerogative to grant, and I would submit to you that it is a justified waiver. It does not set a precedent, because every project is unique. But in this case, I think it is beneficial to both our project and the adjoining property owners to allow the natural drainage pattern to continue as it does today. In my correspondence with Clinton, and I'm sure y'all have a piece of it, if not all of it, in your packets, we go into a lot of numbers about percentages and cubic feet per second per linear foot of property line, and I don't want to bore you with reading you a bunch of numbers, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about it and why I feel that this is a justified waiver request. With that said, I would love to answer your questions and see what you might have there.
We've talked about this quite a bit, and this is, you know, runoff over hundreds of feet, just coming straight across. In order to do, by the letter of the law, what we would have to do there is dig a ditch and direct all of that runoff into a retention pond, and then channelize it where it's coming out at one point instead of coming out at, you know, nearly infinite points across hundreds of feet. And, yeah, and thereby increasing the velocity and affecting a lot of downstream situations there. And it is beneficial to the farmland, to the south there, so. So, you know, after talking to them and looking at this deal, I'm in favor of granting the variance on this particular situation.
Like you said, it always depends, it's a project by project. It depends upon the terrain of the project, and this is a flatter sheet. Like you said, it disperses the water over sheet flow as opposed to channel.
And that is correct.
I agree.
There are three locations where we do have a concentrated flow, and we are proposing to put the ponds there, as I believe is appropriate. My personal opinion is, I have never seen any case law on this, but for us to take a thousand feet of sheet flowing together into a single point, I'm of the opinion that violates water code of creating a point source discharge and an erosion issue.
I agree, I agree. Any further discussion? Mr. Head, do you agree that this particular project here needs a waiver variance?
Development agrees that it would not set a precedence, and if the variance is only to the south, like you said, the sheet flow, not the centralized or the channelized drainage, then Development has no objection to the variance. He's certified that it was not going to create an adverse impact.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, I'm reconvening back into Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion that we grant the variance request, the subsection, or Section Two, Article Nine, Sections 2.2, 2.63, and 9.7 of the subdivision regulations for Rolled Stone Estates, Precinct One, on the sheet flow increase there.
I hear second.
And the rationale method. And the rationale method, the design methodology, yeah, 9.7?
I second that motion. Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Stark, for coming down. Okay? Okay, the next, we're gonna go ahead and convene into a special hearing to discuss the concept plan of the Tradition at Port Ridgely. Mr. Head.
All right, the next item we have is also a public hearing to discuss and consider the concept plan for the Tradition at Port Ridgely. The property is located at 3,700 Winding Way, Cary Bay, Texas, and proposes to create 14 single-family lots. The proposed concept plan is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct Three and will be served by A-mud, water, and sewer. The concept proposes to construct 1,374 and a half linear feet of six-inch concrete streets with one cul-de-sac. The largest residential lot is 1.797 acres, and the smallest is 0.543 of an acre. There will be fire hydrants installed with fire protection that meet the flow rate as described in the regulations. There is one variance associated with this concept plan. The variance is to Section One, 6.4E3D, and Section Two, Section 6.4C, concerning a street longer than 600 feet ending in a cul-de-sac. According to the variance request, engineer believes due to the shape of the property and the lake being the boundary to the west and to the south and existing subdivision along the north right-of-way, this creates a hardship that would not set a precedent due to the configuration of the property, where it is not feasible to create an intersection or turnarounds. There are no lots proposed to be created in this subdivision along the north right-of-way, only along the south right-of-way of the street, and fire hydrants are being installed. He does not, the engineer does not believe it poses a hardship for emergency response vehicles, because there's only driveways on the south side of the proposed road. And I think the engineer might be here to comment.
Is he here? Yes.
Trey Strevie with Baird Hampton and Brown Engineers, the design engineer for the project. This is a little bit of a unique-shaped property. It's just a long, skinny strip along the south side of Nassau Bay, where the Lake Granbury has a cove with an average width of the property of only 350 feet. So we're proposing to build a private driveway along the north property line and only have lots on one side of the road. All the lots are at least 100 feet wide, with the exception of one lot at a cul-de-sac that has 60 feet of road frontage. So you have one driveway every 100 feet along one side of the road only, through a gated entrance that has a turnaround and a cul-de-sac at the end. There's only 14 lots, 14 driveways, so we don't believe that anybody will have difficulty navigating this concrete street in the event of an emergency.
Also, in talking with the individual that owns the property, we've had numerous discussions, and, you know, that included adding, they were already going to do A-mud water, you know, adding the lift station and adding A-mud sewer to the project rather than aerobic systems on each of the lots, because that would change the size requirements for the lots themselves. But, you know, so that all will tie into A-mud, both water and sewer, you know, in that, and I appreciate, you know, them going forward with that.
Yes, sir, and we have a will-serv letter from A-mud for both water and sewer service. Anything else? Any other questions?
Do you have any objection to the plan? Mr. Head, the concept?
Due to the unique situation and the obvious hardship of the property, and the fire hydrants installed meet the required flow rates, we have no objection to this variance. All the comments have been addressed. The court chooses to grant the variance first. Staff recommends approval of the concept plan as presented.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, we're gonna adjourn out of the public hearing back into Commissioners' Court at 18 minutes till 10. All right, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the concept plan for the Tradition at Port Ridgely.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the concept plan at the Port Ridgely, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Head. Financial, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. You've all been given advance information regarding invoices due to be paid in this court, and you've also been given a list of payments over $10,000. Are there any questions regarding payments this court?
Questions? Do I hear a motion? About paying the bills? Anybody want to pay the bills?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to pay this month's bills, $577,170.16.
Second. Okay, a motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to pay the bills in the amount of $577,170.16, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Judge, Commissioners, my next item on the agenda is the financial review of the Sheriff's Commissary inmate and bail bonds. We have completed this audit. We have sent a letter to jail standards. They're in compliance, there are no issues, and we ask that you accept this audit report.
Okay.
Did y'all make the motion to accept the 2021-2022 review of the Sheriff's Commissary inmate bail bonds financial records?
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to accept the 2021-2022 review of the Sheriff's Commissioner's inmate and bail bonds financial records, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Attorney.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kidd. Okay, this brings us down to miscellaneous, and item number one, consider and take appropriate action to release insurance reimbursement to North Hood County Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $11,000. This vehicle is owned by the department and was totaled in an accident. Mr. Jeff Young, Fire Marshal.
Yes, sir. So they had a vehicle that they owned that was involved in a motor vehicle collision. The insurance company totaled it. They bought the chassis back for $3,000. They deducted the deductible plus the amount of whatever they were purchasing. The remaining balance was $11,000. I just wanted to bring that before the court and get your permission to release that check to them so that they can look for another vehicle.
Okay.
This particular truck is entirely owned by North Hood County VFD. We pay the insurance, as I say, as part of their subsidy, and this just cuts the check to them and let them do, go about their business with it.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? If not, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, sir, Judge. I make a motion that we release the insurance reimbursement to North Hood County VFD in the amount of $11,000.
Second. I'll make second. All right, a motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to release the insurance reimbursement to North Hood County Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $11,000, second by County Judge Ron Massengill. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir.
Give them the good news. Okay, item number two, discuss and take appropriate action to join the TIVA opioid settlement through the Texas Attorney General's Office. Mr. Mills, have you reviewed this item that?
This is just the third, I think, installment of, we've already done two of these approvals. It's just another settlement from the AG's office, so I would recommend approval.
Right, yes, that just puts us in part of the deal here.
Right.
Okay, good deal, all right. Why, you're up, well, I guess we'll have to carry it when it comes up here. I was seeing the other one, that Smersh contract was. Have you reviewed that Smersh contract?
Yes, okay, well, that's not on the agenda.
Is it? That's right, it's not even on here. All they did was clean up, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just saw it, you're right. Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion to go ahead and approve the TIVA opioid settlement through the Texas Attorney General's Office?
I move that we join the TV opioid settlement through the Texas Attorney General's Office.
Your second?
Yep, second.
Okay, a motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to join the TIVA opioid settlement through the Texas Attorney General's Office, second by Commissioners' Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries five zero. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on retiring Deputy Kenneth Lipskin's weapon per Texas Government Code 614.051, purchase of a firearm by an honorably retired police officer. Got Sheriff Deez here. Sheriff, we're gonna do the same thing again? I make a motion that we go ahead and let Kenneth Lipskin buy his weapon back for a dollar. Are you willing to pay that dollar?
I'm willing to pay that dollar. That's what we did in the past, and Kenneth has been a longtime employee of the county, and so I'd recommend and ask that we do that under this Government Code 614.051.
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we allow Deputy Kenneth Lipskin to purchase his weapon pursuant to Government Code 614051 of his personal firearm for $1. Second by Commissioner Wilson. And Sheriff Deez here is looking if he can find a small enough bill here to go ahead and pay that $1, so Deputy, there it is, right there. Okay, Sheriff, that's good, so good. We can let, please give the good news to Deputy Lipskin, tell him he gets to keep his personal fire weapon. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have our very own Tammy Dooley to come up here and discuss, to explain to us that we want to take appropriate action to approve the request for 25 parking spaces in the courthouse parking lot for the Fort Worth chapter of EO, which is Entrepreneurs' Organization Scavenger Hunt Event on Friday, April the 1st, 2022, between 10:30 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. I'll tell you one thing, I think that New York City is gonna be trying to get and hire Tammy Dooley, because she comes up with some events that put Granbury, the best historic city, three years in a row. Who does that? I mean, this lady does a fabulous job for the city of Granbury, and as consequence, all of Hood County. So explain why this is a good idea, Ms. Dooley.
Thank you, Judge Massengill, Commissioners' Court. Thank you for letting me be here, and you did touch on this, and I am here to request 25 parking spaces for this group. This event is a familiar This event is a familiaration tour, a group of DFW-area CEOs, and they want to come to unique places, and of course, Granbury is a unique place, so we're really excited about that. Unfortunately, they're only here for the day, three hours, but as soon as we learned about them, we decided we need them here overnight, so we're working on that next time they'll base out of here. But the time requested is 10:30 to 1:30, and they're trying to have unique experiences. They want to park on the square and then do shopping and have lunch, so probably two cars, two people per vehicle, so it's a great piece of business for tourism. And Visit Granbury and the city will place the cones in the reserved area and remove them promptly, so they will not sit there all day. We can't afford that. We have a lot of people coming in. So we work with numerous groups like this to handle their parking requests, and of course, everybody wants to be on the courthouse square because it is probably the most photographed icon in Granbury, so we're so proud of it. And we just want to also say that we appreciate Hood County so much and everything you do to support tourism in our community. Your support of these parking places makes that component of tourism possible, so we want to just extend a big thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions to ask of Ms. Dooley?
I've got a recommendation, Judge. We might want them to put the cones out earlier. The square's been filling up pretty big time, so I would suggest to move this time, you know, maybe to even seven o'clock or 7:30. Just my suggestion.
We're happy to do that, and you are correct, it is filling up, and we've even had to move cones after we put them up there, so, but we'll take this on ourselves through Visit Granbury to make sure that those parking spaces are available to this group.
Okay, good. Any other discussion? Well, do I hear a motion? I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we allow our twenty-five parking places in the courthouse parking lot for the Fort Worth chapter of the EO Entrepreneurs' Organization Scavenger Hunt Event on Friday, April the first, 2022, and, but, let's go ahead and set them up like at 8:00 a.m.
Okay.
From 8:00 a.m. until 1:30 p.m. Second. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous approval. Ms. Dooley, come back anytime.
Thank you, Judge, and I promise I'm not going to New York. I love it here. Thank you.
Am I going to New York?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right.
All right, Judge, before we, before we move on, there seems to be some question about whether there was a vote taken on number three. I thought, I thought I remembered saying aye, and I wrote five oh, so.
I wrote down aye.
Just, maybe should we go ahead and just make darn sure to?
Let's do a redo. It's okay by me.
Yeah.
Right.
Commissioner Wilson seconded it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, there's a question about whether we called for the vote.
That's true.
Okay. Well, let's go back there to visit item number three. I got carried away for selling. So we have a motion for Kenneth Lipskin to go ahead and purchase his weapon for $1, second by Commissioner Jack Wilson. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to know if that dollar's any good or if it's counterfeit.
All right, assuming it's a good American dollar, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Okay, item number five, consider and take appropriate action to approve the annual renewal of RFB 2021-005 Polypropylene Piping for Drainage Culvert Rehabilitation. We have Mr. Glenn Tillman. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. This is a contract renewal for Advanced Drainage Systems, which manufactures the polypropylene piping for drainage covert rehabilitation. And as you know, prices on everything are going up, and pretty much every contract that we, that comes up for renewal, the vendors are asking for increases. But I did want to discuss this one quickly, just because it's a very substantial increase, you know, being a petroleum product. The good news is that we use this company on a very limited basis, and actually, we haven't even used them yet, but we do plan to on a very, very limited basis, so it's not going to be a huge overall increase in dollars for the county, but I did want to bring it to your attention, and I do request the approval on this.
Better buy it now, it ain't gonna do anything but go up.
Well, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions or comments to make regarding the annual renewal of the piping for drainage?
I'll make the motion, Judge, to approve the annual renewal of RFB 2021-005 Polypropylene Piping for Drainage Culvert Rehabilitation.
Second. We have a motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the annual renewal of the piping for drainage, as stated in the record, and second and a third approval by Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Andrews. Okay. So with that, any other questions or discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, discuss current status of American Rescue Act funds received to date by the county, including how much has been dispersed and to whom, how much remains in the account, how much the county is expected yet to receive, and to schedule a workshop to fully explore all options and to receive public input regarding these funds. As I read this, you're not asking to take any action, you just want to discuss this. Why don't we just discuss it in the workshop that you're proposing in the motion where we can have a total discussion and bring it all out about everything? That would be my suggestion. Do we have anybody who wants to speak to this?
Yes.
Hey, I'm, I'm okay with that, Judge, conceptually, but if we got speakers.
Got one for six? No? Oh, good with you. I have me good.
Got two? Well, let's, Christine Sanego and Nanette Samuelson. Do y'all want, would you rather wait and have your comments and have a workshop where we can have everybody's input and discussion and bring records and actually do it in a workshop?
I'd like to ask some questions to kind of bring up some points that need to be considered for future funds coming or what is left to be discussed.
Okay, well, the reason I'm saying this is there's nothing to vote on. We're not voting on anything today. You just want to bring up some points, is that what you're? Okay, Ms. Sanego.
... a couple of times ago, and you gentlemen could not speak.
Okay.
So at this point, I would like to be able to bring up.
Okay, I think Ms. Sanego was first, Ms. Samuelson.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to bring these questions up to you. The questions that I have is that are based on the detailed report that is from June first, 2021, until February 11th. Four million dollars of that $6 million rescue fund money that came to the county was spent. There's two million that aren't accounted for yet at this time. So part of the discussions is, I would like to find out as a citizen, and I'm sure that other people would like to know what happened to that other $2 million. Now, there are other things that are, and I've got it written out to allow it, and I have a copy for each one of your gentlemen, that you can use it when the workshop comes about. And the question that I brought up the last time was, why, you know, why just a few nonprofit organization received large amounts, yet others were passed, were passed by? You know, reduce the amount to the few that did receive the funds so that you have more money to distribute to the others? And please, I want to make it very clear, I have nothing against giving funds that are come to the county to nonprofit organizations. I'm all for it. But you've got to take a look at it and you'd be able to tell as far as which ones, which ones are the ones that are self-sufficient, that have legitimate goals, the ones that are struggling, et cetera, you know? So from my research, I understand there's like seventy nonprofit organizations that have mushroomed up. Well, it's obvious you can't take care of all seventy of them, but anyway, it's just a thought, you know? How was the thought process? How did it come about distributing the money? The other question is, is that why is it that we, the people, have to find out from rescue, about the rescue funds distribution via picture in the paper? Why were the people not informed of these funds, of what happened with them? Okay. Did a workshop take place? When I went back to my notes for the year, it indicated twice that there was a workshop to be approved, but it didn't state what kind of a workshop. So did a workshop happen? Because that was the ultimate goal when we were discuss, when you gentlemen were discussing last year. Did it happen? I'm getting some.
We voted on all, all of the charities that got.
I don't want to take your time, but do you, do you get this report? Becky, can she have this report?
I've got this report.
Ma'am, I don't, I don't know what report you have, but I have the current budget report that would end this month, and that's how they're run, and I show we've spent $1,896,410.75 out of the five, what I budgeted for this year was 5.5 million because some was spent in the prior year. So that still leaves over 300,000, I'm sorry, 3 million that we haven't spent. That's right off of this report, so I'm not sure what you're looking at.
This is called the detailed report account detail by.
It is, and that shows where the money was spent. It's not going to probably give you this detail that I'm, and I will happily give you this, it's the budget report that is current right now, and.
This is what I'm saying. This is going to take some time. This is why I would like to do it at a workshop where everybody, we can see all of this.
Right.
But I want to tell you something, at the, at the Commissioners' Court, we voted on every charity that got the funds that were dispersed. So you didn't read about it in the newspaper. It happened months before at here, and here is the committee as such that would either pass or not pass, and if my memory serves me correct, there was one that was passed unanimously by all Commissioners, and then the other ones, I think, were passed by a vote of four to one. So it was on the record, transcribed, made public about when the vote was taken about the charities, such as Mission Granbury and the senior citizens and everything. I'm with you. I wish we could help out all the charities, but I think we could do better if we could sit down in a workshop. I'm all for just scheduling a date here today so you can know and come to the next one so that we can see what else we have. I know that like some of this money is already pre-committed, that we did vote on, again, it may be in the bank account still, but money has been committed for the radio system for the Sheriff's Department. That it's sort of like writing a check out of your checking deposit. You've written a check, it just hadn't cleared the bank yet. Well, we haven't written it because all the items haven't come through yet.
I think I can answer your first question. You want to know how much we spent and how much is left. We've been reporting every two weeks from the auditor. Right, here's the report. Purchases that we've made, this is March 8, 2022, for purchases, we've purchased $2,572,137.77. We have anticipated expenses of $3,929.501.23. Now, less approved, these are expenditures that have already been committed, $3,929,501. It leaves us at less payable due, we've got $96,000 left. Here's the report that's put by the auditor.
Is that the rescue fund? I'm sorry.
That is the ARPA rescue money.
Fund, okay.
Yes, the original 5.9, $5,986,715 is the check we have already received. That's all the money we've received so far, and this is what we've spent it on, what we have approved to spend it on that hasn't been approved. And there's a whole litany of things. We could sit here and go through the list. We've got radios, the, the, our.
Well, some of, some of the questions I have here is addressing about, you know, I saw the, this report here, and it shows a lot of payroll, and it's, it's like, I don't understand that. It doesn't make any sense that we're spending it, spending all this money on payroll, and yet it shows out of there.
This is why I'm saying that a workshop is the proper place where we could sit down, you can talk, we'll bring paper, we can sit around, and I'm all for setting a date for this workshop.
Public records to what we've spent it on.
Well, again, this money has helped take a burden off even county finances, so it's allowable to pay the Emergency Management gentleman and his, his assistant out of this money, and that's a no-brainer.
Okay.
It's just saving money for the county. Part of the administration of the grant cost is put in there. So that's why you see payroll in there, because it's allowable, and that's taking some of the burden off the county. It's a help.
Right.
And it was, it was discussed, and any time that we can utilize that money and help the county and help the people, that's what these, these gentlemen decided to do. They've, they've done their best, but again, I think they're, they're all right. We need to sit down and talk about this.
Right, and, and what I would also suggest is that I didn't see anything about helping the Sheriff's Department, getting more deputies, or maybe getting them a raise, you know, having six deputies per shift. That's, that's not enough to keep the county safe, and they risk their lives for us. The same for the fire department. You know, they could use some help, and how about a permanent fire department? We've got the buildings, but we're saying, you know, well, we want to stay with the volunteer, but at the same token, I'm hearing it from very reliable sources that some businesses don't come to Granbury because we have a volunteer fire department, a lack of confidence. So we also need the infrastructure to support the businesses. So you're shaking your head no, but.
Not true.
But I mean, you know, show, show me the proof of where the fire department or the sheriff was held.
Who told you that businesses wouldn't come to Hood County because we didn't have a paid fire department? Who told you that?
I'm sorry?
Who told you that businesses wouldn't come to Granbury because we don't have a full paid fire department? Who told you that?
Some previous panels from Commissioners' Courts and Judges, yes.
Haven't got any names, have you? Did you do that?
I said previous.
Previous, previous courts. Oh.
It came, it came from government offices, okay.
I can't speak, I can't speak for previous courts.
So I took their word for it. Ms. Christine, the bulk of this money is to replace an antiquated radio system with towers handheld in the car, and that's going to be costly.
Of course.
Thank goodness we did it now, because everything has gone up astronomically. So that is the bulk of this cost, ma'am, is the radio system that the sheriff desperately needs. So yes, we are trying to take care of a big need. We would have had to borrow that money. Luckily, blessedly, we got this money, and that, that's where the bulk of this money is going. There is already a contract in place, we've already made our initial payments, and it's ongoing work. It's going to take a while, but that's where the, the bulk of this is going. So yes, ma'am, we are trying to take care of who we can, and we're looking into options. I've been working with the Emergency Management. Every five minutes, the parameters of this changes. There's a new guideline. It's just incredibly time-consuming to wade through this and make sure we're doing everything proper, and we are. Hopefully, we'll get another set of money, and that's the time to start working on the fire departments. That's just, that part, that last part is my opinion, so.
Right, right.
But I assure you, we're doing everything we can to keep up with this and do it properly and meet the needs of the county, and the needs were a radio system for the sheriff. That was a huge need.
I mean, I, I mean, that, that's fine. Just think also as far as the personnel, and, you know, the Sheriff's Department, they need help. They need our support by having more officers out there to protect them and protect the people.
The only thing with that is that once it happens in the ground funds, we won't, we would have to pay a lot of people as far as raises, we won't always have that money. I'm sure that they possibly, for sure.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We will have a workshop. Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Nanette Samuelson.
Good morning. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to these agenda items. I just want to go back and talk about last year. In June 2021, I was here advocating to use some of the American Rescue Act funds to return to taxpayers. After all, it's all taxpayer money. I made the comment that the rules are clear, that states cannot use the funds to offset taxes, however, it was not clear that counties were restricted in this use. So now we have the final rules. Federal Register, Volume 87, Number 18, Thursday, January 27th, Rules and Regulations. State, these restrictions apply to all eligible use categories, however, some restrictions However, some restrictions apply only to certain types of recipients. Governments and recipients are advised to review the final rules to determine which restrictions apply to their type of government. For example, state, territory, tribal government, county, metropolitan city, or non-entitlement unit of government. For states and territories only, funds may not be used to offset directly or indirectly a reduction in net tax revenue resulting from the change in state or territory law. So that's clear to me, that the county is not restricted to return the taxpayers the money that they indirectly sent to the federal government and is now coming back as the American Rescue Act. So this clears up any confusion. This taxpayer-funded American Rescue Act can be returned to the taxpayers. The taxpayers have fully funded this county throughout the entire pandemic. In fact, in the 2021, 2022 county budget includes a 3.18% increase in the budget. Taxpayers have been hit the hardest from the pandemic, facing job losses, loss of family members, and now with soaring inflation. You can show you understand, you care, and you appreciate the taxpayers by reducing their tax burden. Now moving on to the accounting of the funds. Also, back in June and July, the Commissioners Court and the one workshop that was held on July 21st, there were many statements made about the stringent process and review of how the small businesses and charities would apply for and be reviewed for the funds. My questions. What is the application process? What is the criteria? What ha, how has the process been communicated to the public? How were the recipients selected? What was the ranking criteria? So in general, where is the transparency of this process? There were many statements made in this, that there would be a series of workshops with public participation. There was one workshop on 7/21 last year that consisted mainly of Jay Webster laying out the plan. That was it. It's not too late to create a transparent process, communicate the, and communicate the process to the community and get community input. And I urge you to do that. And just the information that Commissioner Cotton was just providing was very interesting. That should be, you said you get it every two weeks, every week? So why not publish that in the paper? Put it on the website every week, every time you get it. Make this a transparent process so the community knows, so people like Christine aren't worried about where the money's going. Make it public. Put it in the paper. You get it, why don't we have it? Put it in the paper, put it on the website. You get it every week, put it out there every week so that people know where it's going and what the process is. I definitely think there needs to be a, a better review process and a better, I mean, the application process needs to be made public so that people know how to apply for the funds. Thank you.
Does anybody wish to come up with a date to have a workshop?
Wait, excuse me, Judge, I, I got a couple of things to say first, and then I'll throw, we can come up with some dates. Once again, you guys usurped my agenda item. And I sat back here and let you do it. But I want to point something out. Number one, for the record, I want people to go back to August 24th, 2021, go to YouTube and watch the Commissioners Court timestamp two hours and two minutes roughly where it starts, and watch it through two hours and 26 minutes roughly where it ends. We had two items on the agenda regarding the American Rescue Funds and a alleged deadline of August 31st that X, Y, and Z had to be done. The first item on the agenda, which I drafted based on my reading of the American Rescue Act at that time, was a general statement of what we would like to do with these funds in general terms that was sufficient for what we needed as of August 31st. And we passed that 5-0. It was basically a walkthrough because the next agenda item that Ms. Kidd, the judge, and Mr. Webster put together, and they claim that we passed a budget on that day. You go watch that. You go watch that and see if we passed a budget. We, at least two Commissioners up here were under the oppression, impression that that second item on, agenda item number 13 was just a placeholder. Those items that were on that budget that we had no input on. As a matter of fact, when I questioned who came up with this budget, the judge said he did, Jay Webster and Becky Kidd came up with it. That's on the record. The next thing I know, and I'm thinking, one of these days, we're going to have a workshop. It never happened. The next thing I knew, there's photo ops with the Hood County News where the judge and Ron Cotton are holding up ceremonial checks to 501(c)(3)'s or what have you of their choice, without ever having any discussion with anybody taxpayer out here. There's many, many questions that have been brought up by that. I question whether we passed that budget that day, because now here, six months later, it's become the budget, which I, I felt that train was coming after that meeting was over with, which, by the way, I voted, I was the one no vote on it, and I think maybe another Commissioner wasn't sure what happened that day. But there's several things that I came back with in October, when I went to Commissioners' and Judges' Annual Conference in Round Rock, Texas. One of the modules was 4.023 Grant Seeking American Rescue Act Plan Act. And that was put on by Judge Glenn Whitley out of Tarrant County and the Honorable Trimmer Woteck Judicial Resource Liaison out of the Texas Association of Counties. And I found out a lot of things that we had been told by Mr. Webster were not right. Now, maybe it was a mistake. I'm not pointing fingers that there's any ill intent here. All I'm saying is that that was incorrect information. And you bet your boots, we need a, we need a workshop, we maybe need two workshops. But from my perspective, we not, we don't need to be writing any more checks until we do that and have some workshops and let the people out here see what's been going on. That's my two cents.
But I don't think anybody had any difficulty with us giving the money to Mission Granberry, to the Senior Citizens Center, to the Peluxi River Children's Abuse Center. I forgot who was the other ones that we have. There's only two more, I think. You recall, Ms. Kidd?
Child advocacy.
That's, that's the Peluxi River Child Advocacy. But anyway, we'll have it. They was all voted on, and anyway, let's hear some dates about a workshop.
Let me make this suggestion, Judge. These, the folks with the Texas Association of Counties that are, they are going around, and they're happy to put on a workshop to go through what's in this module, I will volunteer to find some dates that they can come here and get back with the court on some potential dates, and we can do it that way if you would like.
That'd be fine with me. I'm going to meet a bunch of them in Lubbock tomorrow, because I'm going to a judicial conference in Lubbock, Texas, that will be going from Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday in Lubbock. And I will be seeing a bunch of the tact people, and we'll ask them about it as well. So we'll try to get some convenient dates then.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'd just like to clarify one thing with the Commissioner over there. I, I thought you said that you voted no on, on the, you called it the budget, on, on how we were going to spend the 5.9 million?
I certainly did.
Well, one vote doesn't control this court.
What's your point?
So I just want to make sure that's clear, that the court, if I, if I vote one way and don't like it, and the other four vote the other way, I'm totally okay with that. Why aren't you agreeable to where the majority of the court votes? I don't get it. So anyway, that's enough of that.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and get a date up there, and it will be publicized. Everybody can come back with the additional monies that are coming in. Okay.
Judge, I'll pull the next item.
All right, the next item, number seven, has been pulled. And so this brings us to item number eight. Discuss and take appropriate action to modify development regulations on RV parks to have 150-foot setback for many adjacent residential property line. And we have two people that want to speak on this. Ms. Dunn, you are the first one that has signed up, and then Ms. Mercer, you're the second speaker. So Ms. Dunn, would you please come and speak right into the microphone so we can hear you? Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I wish I would have came with a joke after that. Don't have one. My name is Shayna Dunn. My husband could not be here. He is a fire chief in mineral wells, and he's preoccupied right now, but I'm speaking on both of our behalf. We own 110 acres, and we're currently building a house in Hood County, out in Lepan. We have two boys that we hope to grow up here in this community and in a peaceful setting. So to say that we're vested just a little. And I'm also here on behalf of my neighborhood and probably every other residential property and homeowner in Hood County. We are here in support of passing this 150-foot setback line for residential properties. As more and more farmland gets sold, your county residents need your help. Our concerns, among many other things, include noise, debris, safety, lights, our farm animals, our property, and our property values. I believe that this is the bare minimum that we can do to offer our residents. I wanted to point out the current status quo of residential property lines in Hood County RV parks. There are several out there, and it seems that there are several more potentially. This is not including anything that's connecting to a commercial property line or crossing a road. This is just RV parks that are next to a residential property line. Midway Pines, 300 feet is their setback. Thorpe Springs, 125 foot. Granberry RV, 965 foot. Springtime, 124 foot. Fall Creek, 90 feet. Broken Springs, 295, and Big Oak, 300 feet. Bringing an average of a 314-foot setback from residential lines. There was a time when basic human courtesy, common sense, and respect for our neighbors would create these setback lines, and unfortunately, we're now reliant on you to impose stricter setback lines and create new boundaries. This proposition will not affect any current businesses, nor will it prevent any future businesses. It will, however, provide extra protection for your county constituents, and we need your support. So in conclusion, I just ask that you imagine your land, your home, and there's an RV park being put next to it, and vote accordingly. And let potential homeowners and property owners know that Hood County is a safe place to build and invest in. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you, Kevin, for getting it on there.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Mercer?
Since we had a big election, I just want to say thank you all for your service. Commissioner Cotton, thank you. Appreciate everything you've done for the county. Mr. Eagle, good luck. Um, excuse me, not Mr. Eagle, Mr. Wilson, good luck. Ms. Eagle, you're safe. So here's, here's kind of where we are on this 150-foot setback. It's not going to affect anybody existing because you can write it as such. Now, it's been brought to my attention that there's a question on the legality. That's curious to me, but since you have made that question, since that has been posed, I am asking you, as members of the court, to request an opinion from Attorney General Paxton. The reason why I'm hoping that you will do this and get this opinion from the Attorney General's office is because if indeed counties can't authorize setbacks, most of the counties in Texas are in trouble because they've done so. So that means every setback is illegal. The precedent's been set that you have the authority and the autonomy to protect the people in this county. And that's really all anyone is asking. The rural residents, especially small landowners like my husband and myself, we have absolutely the right to know what we can or cannot do when we're investing. If someone's back pasture can be utilized to put in an RV park that affects my front pasture, particularly when my road is tiny, I need to know that that's okay with Commissioners Court in Hood County, and so does every other citizen in the county. So I'm asking you to get that opinion from the Attorney General's office, because if it's illegal, it's illegal. I'm asking you to post it on the website so that there is complete transparency. Keep in mind, again, that what you're going to do is negatively impact all of our property values when you do this. These are our assets. They're our homes. Our children and grandchildren play on these roads. They ride their bikes, they take long walks, they skate. It's not going to be possible if you start having RVs going up and down that road. This is not Fall Creek Highway, it's not 144, it's not 377, it's not even Highway 4, and it's certainly not 281. When you don't take invite, when you can't seem to find your way clear, whether you're proposing a business, or you're just the individuals in charge of making sure those businesses are going to be in place and not negatively impact the community, there's a problem. We want our kids to have a safe place to play. I want my grandkids to have a safe place to play and walk, and I'm terribly concerned that no one's paying attention to that. So I hope you'll consider all of this, and I do definitely hope you'll get that opinion from Attorney General Paxton's office. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Head, is there law on this about the setback?
Everything we do comes from the, the state. Everything we're allowed to do comes from the state. Now, in our regulations, in Section 1 of the Development Regulation, Section 611, the Section 4 RV parks, there is a buffering and setback in the subsection, item number 2, the minimum setback established a side setback of 25 feet when abutting a residential district for a recreational vehicle park. I'm not sure where this came from or what gave the county the authority to implement this restriction. It sounds like it was copied from a municipal ordinance because the county does not have zoning when it refers to a residential district. The county can only do what the state allows it to do. It may be a statute somewhere, and I haven't found it yet, but it wasn't in 233 or anything adopted with our subdivision regulations. When we adopt an order, we set out what statutes we adopt, and it's none, and none of those. On 233, 032, it sets out building setback lines we can impose, and those are on adjoining streets or adjoining future streets. Now, all this being said, a building setback line's not going to affect an RV. Setback lines apply to permanent structures. There would be nothing preventing a property owner from putting driveways or drives, dumpsters, or even RVs over the setback line. It will, it would never be shown on a survey because the structure's not affixed to the property, making it real property. The government code could not prohibit the use of someone's private property without compensation. It's called a taking. So just because that building's lined there don't mean they can't use that 150 feet. I mean, we got grocery stores all over town where there's parking areas over the building Section 231, 226, Procedure for Adopting and Advising Regulation of District Boundaries. I'm going to have to ask that you, I don't make any motion on this because it's got to be ran in a newspaper, a general circulation, and have a public hearing 15 days after it was run in the paper. And I guess we'll have to look and see if we can find in the code where we can, but it's still not going to affect if they can put an RV there.
Mr. Mills, have you, could you come up here and address this? Mr. Mills, have you, could you come up here and address this? We're talking about the setbacks for RV vehicles.
Right. What do you want me to answer specifically?
Well, Kenny County do anything about it. It's this government gag on RVs. As I hear Mr. Hid say, that being an RV, that we can't affect how far somebody can park an RV. Am I right on that?
Do you detail a grocery store not put a car in the parking lot?
Yeah.
I feel for these people up out here that have homes and bought 100 acres or whatever to build a home and everything, and so the neighbor can just allow an RV park to come in? Is there an application for, to get a permit to allow other vehicles other than their own to come up there and park on their property? That's what you're concerned about, isn't it?
Personally? Yeah, what all of the managers are not here, but we've had several community meetings.
Yeah, come on up here so we can get a recording.
Sorry. Normally, I'm loud.
Okay.
So we've had community meetings. What everybody is concerned about is there's going to be a lot of vehicular traffic, and so we're concerned about that. And then, I mean, there's other various families have different concerns, noise, lights, you know. Well, take, for instance, the B&amp;B debacle that's going on in Dallas, where they've got drunk people dancing in everybody's front yards in residential neighborhoods. We are a residential neighborhood, even though we're not. That's kind of the rub here. We're not really a residence.
You're a rural residence.
We're rural. We're rural. But the problem with that, even though we're very comfortable with us, with, basically, we sort of take care of ourselves, we're really comfortable as a rule with no regulations because we all kind of take care of each other. We don't do something out there that's going to negatively impact other people's property values, or the safety of their children, or bring in anything that would be detrimental to the community at large. We sort of, we sort of do that together. So now, we've got a property owner who really doesn't live in our area because this is back pasture, right? This domicile's in Eret County, but we're back pasture here, so it won't impact their head domicile because they're up at the front of their property in Eret County, but it's going to impact us, and we're at the back for all of the reasons that I've just said.
Are you trying to set up an RV park?
Yes, not behind his home, not behind where he...
No, I understand.
But at ours, and it's going to be an RV park. I understand that he's requested a septic system, so that means it's not going to be temporary. That means that those people can come out there and stay as long as they want because we are not going, because, again, there's no regulations. So we're concerned. We're concerned about noise, safety, children, and, again, our property values, because for a lot of us, we're small landowners. I don't own 100 acres, nor do many of my contemporaries, but we still have land out there. We've still invested a great deal in there, and it is an asset that we have. So when our property values are impacted, but hises are not going to be, it's frustrating.
Yeah, but, so, to get it straight here, you would like to ask this Commissioners' Court to set up a rule that would govern RVs?
Yes, I would like for it to govern how close they can be to individuals' private property.
But they can still travel the roads now, don't they?
Sure, because, yeah, it's a public road.
Well, I thought you were talking about your children and grandchildren walking and riding their bikes and stuff like that, and there's nothing we're going to be able to do about that. Yeah, okay.
Is this a county road or a private?
It is.
County road.
It is, but it isn't. Because what happened is, when we approached the county a year before you guys got on here, we approached the county and said, hey, what would it take, what would we need to do to get this road tight? So the Commissioners' Court and the county clerk, excuse me, the county attorney at the time said, if you will give us easement on each side, every person in the middle of the road, it'll still be your road, but you're giving a driveway, so we'll maintain it. So that's what we did. End point of fact, that driveway actually ends, I think, right at the end of Shayna's property.
So could I ask you, have you talked to this?
You know what? I tried, and that did not turn out well, so we're not, probably didn't do that again. I would love to sit down and have a cup of coffee with this family and say, these are my concerns. This is what we're worried about, and we're your neighbors. But we haven't had that opportunity. It would be great if we could, but I just don't know that that's going to happen, sir, just to be honest.
Okay, well, Mr. Mills, you've been listening to this. Is there anything that you can think of that we can have any kind of ordinance passed here that could prevent an RV from coming up to?
An RV park?
A park.
Right, because what's the difference between 20-foot and 25-foot? If you can say this RV park has to be 25-foot from a property line, well, if you can do that, why can't it be 150? I know that seems excessive, but this is a lot of land that you're talking about. It really is. Nobody's, I personally, because I'm old and I'm mean, would prefer it not be there at all, but I recognize you can't do that. I mean, you just can't. But can we, can we have it built in such a way that it impacts us less? So the family that wants to put this RV park in, they can still have what they want. They can still make money, but we can have a buffer zone for our families and our property. That's really what we're asking, if I was a parent of ours, sorry.
Okay. Let me tell you what, you know, Mr. Mills, can you write to the Attorney General to try to get an opinion that would address these issues?
Okay, I apologize. I haven't studied this enough, and, I mean, I kind of saw it on the agenda, but nobody really told me ahead of time what to study or whatever, but, I mean, I know we've had, we went to district court the other day on an RV park that was in violation of certain regs and got an injunction and eventually got this guy to move an RV off the property out of precinct 3. I think you're familiar with the property you're talking about. So, I mean, we do have some regulations that pertain to RV parks. I mean, we've been through that, and I don't know why, maybe speak to that a little more clearly, but why maybe not 150 feet, but I mean?
Just the side setback line, but I see the authority to establish a side setback immediately.
Okay, well, this may be just a David Brooks question for me, like the consultant in Austin, but I'll follow up on the thing and get with the two of y'all. If y'all are going to have a special meeting on other environmental type stuff, maybe we can put it on there in two weeks everywhere to do that, but...
What about the septic? What about the, isn't there a certain number of units attached to a system that takes it from being a private system to a public system?
Right, that's a whole different can of worms, but that's all in the sewer code or the water code. That's not for, most people that develop property, they'll establish their own setbacks as curfew or whatever, do they want their subdivision, the house, or go close to the edicts, or does other selling, and we require easement.
Let me ask you, right now, the way things stand, can they set this RV park setback at one foot? I mean, basically back it up to the fence?
They can put an RV over the setback because it's not, it's not real property. But there is a way to do this where we can put the side setbacks. I remember that adopted municipal code, but then you're opening a whole big can of worms where you're doing zoning, you're hiring zoning staff, you're hiring all that, so...
Right now, we don't have zoning, what you're telling us, in the county that restricts any kind of setback for an RV park. And what's on the agenda item here, it says that discuss and take appropriate action to modify development regulations on RV parks to have 150-foot setback. Sounds pretty simple to me. That's what this agenda item says. Is that what we're going to do, or do we want to?
Somewhere that I haven't seen, but it's not in the ones that we adopted to the development regulation.
So we don't have, we're not going to, it wouldn't be modifying, we're going to, means we would be developing regulations for an RV park.
Well, no, I mean, they're already in existence, and it's right there. I'm not sure how that didn't get into the...
The 25-foot present on the ground, they couldn't build a house that manages the office.
Because it's, because you said it was a structure, so the structure, permanent structure, and an RV's not, so it doesn't qualify under that setback.
So it's fixed to the property, it's not real property.
Well, I understand what these people are talking about up here. These two citizens are coming up here and they don't want these RV parks. Can you just check it out, Mr. Mills? Y'all working together to see if we can do anything to give these people some relief from having an RV park just right next to their homes?
And does this have to be, if you're going to modify the regulations, is there, like, public hearing, public knowledge, and all that, right?
Section 231-026 and 233-033, oh, yes, that, write in paper and have a public hearing.
We got to find out if we can do it first, right?
Yeah, I mean, so, my understanding, based on what he just read there, and I was pretty sure that was the case, is even if we could technically do it, I don't think we've met the publication and citation, all that stuff requirements to vote today anyway. Makes sense? So, yeah, I'll keep working on this, and then perhaps we could have it as soon as two weeks.
Well, AG?
That's what we'll try to do.
Well, I mean, yeah, I don't hold your breath on the AG, but I think, I hope that I can do a simpler thing than waiting almost a year now on that other one, so...
Well, let me tell you what else. I'm going to, like I said, to this conference, will be a lot of other county judges and tax will be there, and I'm going to ask the other people, because that is an emerging problem, where people in the city want to get RVs, and they want to come to the country. And then, when they do that, that's fine, they can enjoy it, but then we don't want them destroying our enjoyment while they're here. I got you, okay? So I'm going to see if other people have, what other counties have done that, because, and it's going to become a greater and greater problem because more and more people are going to be buying RVs. I thought the high price of gasoline back in the 80s or whatever had destroyed the RV motor homes, but it hasn't. You know, there was a big boom in them right now, so we're going to do that. So we're going to let our county attorney and Penhead and everybody else look to see if we could come up with some sort of solution. So thank you both for coming down here. We understand what you're going through, and we are sensitive to that, okay? So thank you both. And with that, that concludes...
Well, we're going to take, are we going to take any action?
Well, just table it.
Table it?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to table it.
We'll pull it.
Pull it or table it or something, you know, take action, it's on the agenda.
Let's just table it and let Mr. Mills, he didn't have enough to do here, so he was going to see if we could find something that we can do.
I'll second that table motion.
Okay, we got a motion to table this?
I got it.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and we are adjourned.